This meeting of the City of Socorro Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated. Any violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La junta del Consilio de las Ciudades Socorro está por empezar. Caballeros, favor de quitarse las cachuchas, sombreros y todos favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento prejudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas, se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is 6:01 PM, this meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence led by Weko Elementary School students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you very much, students of Weko Elementary. We'd like to give you a token of appreciation. As I call your name, would you please step forward? Jaslyn Chavez. Iris Delgado. Haley Escobar. Angel Gallardo. Adeline Garcia. Calissa Martinez. Abby Mata. Valeria Miranda. Zachary Obtandic. Joaquín Román. And Gael Valenzuela. A round of applause for these students, please. Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevárez.
Here.
Alejandro García.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Ávalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Here.
And Iván Colombia Lobo Sisampson.
Item number four, public comment.
Cristina Hernández. Señor Hernández tiene tres minutos.
Okay. Mire, mi razón de estar aquí, buenas tardes. Este, yo vivo en la cielo azul y vivo desde el 2000 allí. Entonces, en el 2006 creció el arroyo y desde el 2006 levantaron unas lomas las ciudades Socorro. Y ahora está, tendrán unas dos semanas que ahora no están levantando lomas, son edificios los que están levantando. Entonces, yo soy la que vivo, esa es la que me perjudica más. Y toda la tierra se nos va, entonces no han, no han hecho una barda, no han hecho nada allí desde el 2006. En otras partes han puesto bardas, han hecho unos diques muy bien hechos. Allí lo que pasa con esos edificios que está levantando la Ciudad de Socorro es que las cuatrimotos y levantan una de tierra que no se imagina. A mí me gusta tener mi casa muy limpia y el otro día salí, les llamé la atención con buenas palabras y lo primero que me dijeron, señora, el terreno no es suyo, ¿no? Le digo, yo no estoy diciendo que aquí el terreno es mío, pero respeten por favor. Y yo es lo que vengo a suplicarles a la Ciudad de Socorro que por favor echen una barda, echen algo, ahora otra. Cuando llueve bastante, ustedes saben cómo son los niños, ellos no miden el peligro y van y hacen sus cuevitas. En una de esas, en esos edificios que están levantando, va a quedar un niño sepultado allí. Y eso no lo están tomando en cuenta la Ciudad de Socorro. Yo vivo muy a gusto allí, tengo desde el 2000, imagínense cuántos años tengo viviendo allí. Pero yo no veo que la Ciudad de Socorro hacen diques en otros lados, pero allí no es para echar una barda o algo. Entonces, yo quiero una respuesta. ¿Por qué no ponen una barda o algo para que no entren las cuatrimotos, no entren los niños? Eso lo que ocasionan esas lomas que levanta la Ciudad de Socorro, tiran perros muertos, perros vivos, ponen televisiones de esas que ya se echaron a perder para tirar al blanco. Muchas cosas que pasan allí y la Ciudad de Socorro no lo está tomando en cuenta. Y estoy pagando impuestos, entonces tengo derecho a opinar. Y que por favor me den una respuesta si van a seguir levantando esos edificios que están haciendo. A mí me preguntan bien en mis familiares, ¿dónde vives? Me da vergüenza decir dónde vivo porque antes de entrar a las casas de allí, lo primero que se ven son los edificios de tierra. Entonces, yo digo que no está bien. ¿Por qué en todos lados han hecho todo eso y allí con nosotros no? Estamos pagando impuestos. Las casas no nos las regalaron. ¿Por qué no nos toman en cuenta? El otro día yo le hablé aquí a la Ciudad de Socorro, me dijo, junte gente, no, yo no voy a andar tocando puertas. Yo vengo a hablar por mi casa y porque yo estoy pagando mi casa y estoy pagando mis impuestos.
Señor Hernández, se le ha terminado su tiempo.
Okay, gracias.
Heidi Easton. Ms. Easton, you have three minutes.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Heidi Easton. I just had a question, a comment overall. We have, we're, I live in the same area where Ms. Christina lives. She had mentioned that a lot of stray dogs get dumped in that area. I was recently the victim of a stray dog attack. I was bit by a dog five times all over my legs. Extensive wounds in my legs, bruises. The ambulance was called, Socorro PD was involved. The dog, after the incident, was roaming around the area. The Socorro PD department told me that the dog was still there in the area where he bit me, in the neighborhood, and they couldn't get him or anything because the animal control was closed. It was around seven. The following day, the animal control officer, really nice, followed up, came to my house and told me that why didn't they call him? And I told them that they had told me that the animal control was closed for the day. I don't know what you guys are pretty much doing overall with the animal control department, but there's a lot of stray dogs and I just don't want any other, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood that play. I went, I jumped in front of my son, it was coming after my son, and he got me. So I just want to know, like, overall what's going to be done for the animal control department and overall what can be done.
What's your address, ma'am?
1257 Cielo Lindo Drive. We will contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will be reading a statement that Mr. Ramos emailed. Many, many times I've told you that Socorro government has no control over finances. I know that we have an account financial chief that has nothing to do with having ordered transparency and confidence in our government finances. When you ask a question, a simple one, at the right time, to the right person, you have an incredible answer. What happened on April 6, 2023? Here. The issue was allowing the mayor to drive the city vehicle. That was approved, but somebody asked about how many miles or gasoline may be used. We know that the city finances have a budget for everything and that is great because we may know how much money is spent yearly on each itemized budget. Everybody knows that every year our gerente, manager, requests to approve the annual budget and every year you do it. And it seems that we are good, it seems we are doing things that do not go above or beyond our income. But one of our counselors asked the manager, how much is spent on gasoline and what happens if the budget is exhausted? She answered that there is no problem, we ask for more money. A simple question opens a Pandora box. Socorro does not have a real budget, we do not follow any budget at all. We have a proposed budget, but at the end of the year, we really do not know anything about changes in our original budget nor how much money we spend on each item. Every time the manager, gerente, needs money, you approve it without question. The question is, who is doing the bad job? Quien no se ajusta a un presupuesto, the manager or the counselors or both? I requested the financial itemized budget 2022 and what I got was a bunch of information that I cannot find where it belongs. Podremos conocer detalladamente cuánto se gastó en el presupuesto del año pasado? There is a lot of freedom for the city employees to work on everything they ask, but there is no supervision and no control. It is not feasible that the same person who is in charge of the government job supervises itself, no sense. Hay mucha libertad para que los encargados del gobierno de Socorro trabajen lo que se solicitan. Sin embargo, no hay control, no hay supervisión. No es posible que la misma persona que está a cargo de manejar todo el trabajo en Socorro sea la misma que aplique la supervisión sobre sus mismos trabajos, no tiene lógica. Espero la información para verificarla, muchas gracias.
And those other speakers, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes, mayor, at this time I'd like to make a motion and move item number 18 up.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevárez.
Yes.
Alejandro García.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Iván Colombia Lobo Sisampson.
Item number 18, discussion and action to approve resolution 747 declaring the month of April as Socorro Texas Police Department and its Proud Veterans Appreciation Month.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Mayor, council, the agenda item that I'm about to present today is going to recognize the veterans of our police force alongside staff members that do provide services to the community of Socorro. The gentleman by the name of Dero Man, who is with the Lower Valley Veterans Alliance, has proposed that we recognize our officers for all of the good that they've done here in our community and throughout the entire county of El Paso. Today, however, we are also going to be granting these veterans here recognition not only at the city level but at the state level. We have Ms. Abril Barrasa on behalf of State Representative Mary González's office here as well to present the names of those officers and those staff members. I know at this time these officers may not be in the room, but we're going to go ahead and recognize them anyways and mention their names and we can read those out loud. And at this time, we'll, we'll, we'll start with the presentation and I'll have our mayor, however, read that resolution, that way it gets recognized and then we can start with the ceremonial name. I was going to say name-calling, but that's not what we do here. We're going to, we're going to recognize the names of those members.
Resolution 747. Whereas the Socorro Texas Police Department, the City of Socorro staff and its veterans continue in their love and dedication to duty of the United States of America, the great state of Texas, the City of Socorro, Texas and the community. Whereas the Socorro Texas Police Department and the City of Socorro is staffed with some of our nation's finest who have proudly served in our military. Whereas the Chief of Police David Burton is a United States Army veteran and served in a 19D Cavalry Scout and served with 26th Cavalry Yankee Eyes during the Cold War. Whereas Deputy Chief Jason Stanzion is a United States Navy Army veteran who served as CB Construction Engineer in the Navy and a 95C Military Police in the Army. He served with a CB Mobile Unit 8 during his Navy tour during Operation Desert Shield and with the 704 Military Police Battalion during his Army tour. Whereas Lieutenant Jasiel Muñoz is a United States Army veteran serving as a First Sergeant. He is currently assigned to HHB Third Battalion, 133rd Field Artillery Regiment, Texas Army National Guard Gunslingers. Whereas Bailiff Warrant Officer Samuel C. Anchondo is a United States Army veteran who served in, served as 31B Military Police and served with the 110th Military Police Company during Operation Iraqi Freedom 2008 through 2009. Whereas Detective Elias Varela is a United States Army veteran who served as a 92A Logistics Sergeant and served with the Third Infantry Division in support of Operation Desert Storm. Whereas Detective Sergeant Lee Rosario is a United States Army veteran who served as a 92Y Logistics Specialist and served with the 383rd Quartermaster Battalion. Whereas Patrol Sergeant Mario Benavides is a United States Army veteran who served as 31M Multi-Channel Communications Equipment Operator and served with the 11th Infantry Brigade. Whereas Corporal Will Robertson is a United States Army veteran who served as 88M Heavy Equipment Operator and served with the 47th Brigade Support Battalion, Second Brigade, First Armored Division. Whereas Corporal Ricky Acevedo is a United States Army veteran who served as 915A Auto Maintenance Warrant Officer, 153A Rotary Wing Aviator and 38B Civil Affairs Specialist and served with the 76 Transportation Company, 382 Regiment, First Battalion, Lieutenant Sergeant. TS, 410th Civil Affairs Battalion, First Squadron, First Cavalry Regiment. Senior, whereas Senior Patrol Officer DeAndre Cameron is a United States Army Retired Veteran who served and qualified in the following Special Forces MOSs. 18E Special Forces Communication Sergeants, 18B Special Forces Weapon Sergeants, 18F Special Forces Assignment Operations and Intelligence Sergeant, 18Z Special Forces Operations Team Sergeant. Served 27 years in Special Forces and Special Operation to include Fifth Special Forces Group, Third Special Forces Group, Special Warfare Center Combat Application Group, Joint Special Operations Command, Joint Task Force Six and the Senior Instructor United States Army Sergeants Major Academy. Whereas Senior Patrol Officer Jim Perdue is a United States Air Force veteran who served as Security Forces Airman and served with the Fifth Security Forces Squadron. Whereas Grant Technician Alvin Espinoza is a United States Army Retired Veteran who served as a 25Q Multi-Channel Transmission System Operator Maintainer and served with Fourth Battalion, 25th Infantry Division, Higher Headquarters Company Operation Enduring Freedom, 2009 through 2010. Whereas Public Work Labor Maria G. Cobos is a United States Navy veteran who served as a SK Storekeeper and served with Commander Fleet Activities Yokosuka Naval Base, Japan in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, 2006 through 2008. Commander Support Fleet Naval Base Guam, 2009 through 2010. Whereas Information Technology Technician Juan Espinoza is a United States Army Retired Veteran who served as a 13B 88M Cannon Crew Member, Heavy Equipment Operator and served three combat tours with 115 Forward Support Company, First Cavalry Division, 2006 to 2008. Fourth Battalion, 25th Infantry Division Forward Support Company Operation Enduring Freedom, 2009 to 2010. And 47th Brigade Support Battalion, First Armored Division Operation New Dawn, 2012 to 2013. Whereas Information Technology Director Esteban González is a United States Army Retired Veteran who served as a 25U Signal Support System Specialist and he, and served two combat tours with Third Battalion, 25th Combat Aviation Regiment as the Army Airborne Command and Control System, Master Operator during Operation Iraqi Freedom, 2006 to 2008, and Operation Iraqi Freedom, 2009 to 2010. Whereas the Socorro Texas Police Department supported the El Paso Veterans and Riders Association and the Third Battalion, 133rd Field Artillery Regiment, Texas Army National Guard Gunslingers with their Seventh Annual Veteran Food Drive. Their direct support helped in collecting and distributing over 11,000 pounds of food to El Paso and surrounding communities, veterans and their families. Whereas the Socorro Texas Police Department supported the El Paso Veterans and Riders Association and the Third Battalion, 133rd Field Artillery Regiment, Texas Army National Guard Gunslingers is currently supporting Operation Appreciation where snacks, drinks and other tokens of support are collected and distributed to Texas Army National Guard, Texas Department of Public Safety, El Paso Police Department and our first responders who are currently assigned patrolling the Texas border. Whereas the Socorro Texas Police Department created Team Socorro and are the first law enforcement agency to compete and complete the Baton Memorial Death March on Sunday, March 19, 2023. Their co-ed team of five is the first ever in El Paso County to complete the march. Participants were required to carry no less than 35 pounds in their backpacks for 26.2 miles. Sergeant Mario Benavides and the Deputy Chief Stanzion completed, competed and completed the events as individuals. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Socorro, Texas, its mayor and city council that April 20, 2023 be designated as Socorro Texas Police Department and our Proud Veterans Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ávalos, city council members and Socorro community members. Buenas tardes. Thank you for having me. It is an honor to be here. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Abril Barrasa. I am Representative Mary González's district director. The representative sends an apology as she is unable to join us today given she is in Austin serving the ADI Legislature. This afternoon, we are here to honor and recognize those of you that serve in the Socorro Police Department and are also veterans of the armed forces. Thank you for your service and all that you have done for our country and continue to do for the City of Socorro. On behalf of Representative González in House District 75, it is a pleasure to, it is a pleasure and honor to recognize each of you with the resolution this evening in recognition and gratitude of your service. So these resolutions are for the following individuals. Chief of Police David Burton. Deputy Chief Jason Stanzion. Lieutenant Jasiel Muñoz. Bailiff and Warrant Officer Samuel C. Anchondo. Detective Elias Varela. Detective Sergeant Lee Rosario. Patrol Sergeant Mario Benavides. Corporal Will Robertson. Corporal Ricky Acevedo. Senior Patrol Officer DeAndre Cameron. Senior Patrol Officer Jim Perdue. Grant Technician Alvina Espinoza. Public Work Labor Maria G. Cobos. Information Technology Technician Juan Espinoza. And Information Technology Director Esteban González. I think I missed someone. I'm missing... Once again, thank you for your service and dedication to protect and serve our country and the City of Socorro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Representatives of the City of Socorro, I'm very honored to be here and see how great the city treats its veterans. It's awesome. And I'm not getting paid to say this and Chief has no real arrest authority over me, right?
Oh, good on that?
Okay, good. Okay, so I can say how I feel. You guys got an awesome police force, staff with some of the finest veterans in this country and it's an honor to recognize them. During our Seventh Annual Food Drive, the Socorro Police Department came in and provided a generous donation and supported us and we deeply appreciate it. Special thanks to Lieutenant Muñoz and Sergeant Benavides who helped arrange it and Chief Burton came in with no reservations and just jumped right on there and came in to help this whole force. So we really appreciate it. So it's a greatest honor. I'd like to present this to the chief. And sincere appreciation for your support in the Seventh Annual Van Deren's Food Drive and your continued support of our veterans and community. Your dedication, sincere efforts reflect greatly upon your dedication and your support of our community. Give this 22nd day of March, 2023. El Paso Veterans and Riders Association, EPBRA.
Let's see it.
Do we do pictures? Okay, can I, can I do one thing extra, mayor?
Yes.
We can do the pictures afterwards. With your permission, might I please present a certificate to Representative Rudy Cruz?
Yes, sir.
Come on. You have put over me for the last few months. If you would, please. If you would, please. The El Paso Veterans and Riders Certificate of Appreciation is presented to Representative Rudy Cruz, Socorro City Council, District Three. In appreciation for your support of El Paso Veterans, El Paso Veterans, we are following uh, County Judge Sam Eagles Initiative of El Paso being a Veterans Capital of the USA. So we include the entire county, city of Socorro, and everything. To El Paso Veterans and their families, your dedication and commitment reflects greatly upon yourself, the City of Socorro, and the great state of Texas. Given this twentieth day of April, twenty twenty-three, signed Daryl G. Monde President, Marco A. Pastana, Vice President. Thank you for what you do. I see Mr. Cruz out there quite often at various events throughout our entire county. And, wrong make you look good. Sorry, I'm not used to this, so. Everybody gets out little coins, a little tokens of appreciation. Uh, being EPVRA and those who don't know me, however, in the back can explain to you how we are. We're very, we like trying different things. We like being creative. So with the greatest honor, we're going to p- present you with an EPVRA winner's trophy. So when you're out there, you can show it off and show it to your people and everything. Although it is the size of a shot glass, we do not encourage you to drink. We're not encouraging that. We're, we're just giving it to you of appreciation. But we do want to thank you, Rudy, thank you. Representative Cruz, you have done so much with our veterans community and fought for so many things. I know you don't like this, the, the attention and everything, but uh, it's all very well to say. Thank you for what you do.
I gotta sit down with all day and all?
Oh, yeah. Let me take the picture, Steve. Here, you have the plastic board. No, thank you for what you do.
Nice.
Chief. Rudy, give him his. Share if you want.
Yep.
Eric has to. Eric's still in front.
Oh, my shot glass.
My shot glass.
Ready to smile, one, two, chief smile, fix smile, one, two, and.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo's absent. Moving on to regular agenda, public hearing and ordinances. Item eleven, public hearing of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division Three Board of Adjustment, Section Two dash seventy-one, Members, Alternates, Teams, or Terms, Qualifications. It is now six thirty-five P.M. Public hearing is open. As there are no speakers for this item, public hearing is now closed at six thirty-five P.M. Item number twelve, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division Three Board of Adjustment, Section Two dash seventy-one, Members, Alternates, Terms, Qualifications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lorraine Kimito City Planner, Planning and Zoning Department. The request is to consider amending the structure of the Board of Adjustments. Currently, the ordinance calls for seven members consisting of one representative from, one appointee from each representative and two from mayor. It is my understanding that the Board of Adjustments has not met in over a year and a half due to a lack of quorum. Prior to my coming on board, it was determined that lowering the membership requirements would assist staff in achieving quorum. It was verified through our attorney, Marwan Bhati, that the change could be made to the ordinance. Our recommendation is that we lower the requirement uh from seven to five with two alternates. Uh, doing so, we'd also request that the two alternates be the mayor's appointees. If council recommends approval, staff will uh add this change to the Board of Adjustments bylaws for consideration out of future meeting. Uh, staff can answer any questions at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo's absent. Item number thirteen, public hearing of an ordinance to amend Ordinance Part Two Code of Ordances, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division Six Ethic Review Commission. It is now six thirty-seven P.M. Public hearing is open. As there are no speakers for this item, public hearing is now closed at six thirty-eight P.M. Item fourteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Ordinance Part Two Code of Ordances, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division Six Ethic Review Commission. It is now six thirty-seven P.M. Public hearing is open. As there are no speakers for this item, public hearing is now closed at six thirty-eight P.M. Item fourteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Ordinance Part Two Code of Ordenses, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division Six Ethic Review Commission. It is now six thirty-seven P.M. Public hearing is open. As there are no speakers for this item, public hearing is now closed at six thirty-eight P.M. Item fourteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Ordinance Part Two Code of Ordenses, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division Six Ethic Review Commission.
Thank you. Good morning, good evening, Mayor and Council. Carol Candelaria-Hera, he's our director. He's still in the morning. Uh, this item is requested for approval to the amendment of the Ethics Review Commission ordinance. The Ethics Commission voted to have legal review and make any necessary modifications to fit the needs of the commission. The changes were approved on March fifteenth and are now being presented to council for adoption. Staff is recommending approval at this time. Do you have any questions? I'm available for.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo's absent.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Me too.
Grants Department, item number fifteen, discussion and action to approve Resolution Seven Forty-six, proclaiming the month of April Fair Housing Month in the City of Socorro, Texas, to end housing discrimination and raise awareness of every resident's fair housing rights.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Valdez, City Development Director. Uh, we're here to request your approval to spread awareness about the Fair Housing Act. Um, this year marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. Um, and we want to inform the public and make sure that everybody knows about their rights under this act. Um, housing discrimination based on a person's race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national or- origin is illegal. Um, we want to encourage anyone in Socorro that feels that they may have experienced discrimination, um, housing discrimination, we want to encourage them to file a complaint with the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department at no charge. Um, you can call one eight hundred six six nine nine seven seven or visit hot.gov. That information is also available on the City of Socorro's website, and we'll be spreading the information via our so- social media platforms as well for the rest of the month of April.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo's absent.
City Manager, item number sixteen, discussion and action to approve proposal for professional engineering services by Trilogy Five G Inc. doing DBA Trilogy Next Gen for the City of Socorro Smart City Initiative.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so in our last meeting, we were asked to go back and receive a proposal. Uh, we did receive an agreement, then they sent the agreement, um, naming it the proposal. The attorney is still reviewing the agreement, and staff continues to have multiple questions regarding, um, TNG. This agency will be applying for a grant on behalf of the City of Socorro. This agreement does not stipulate the administration of the grant. The amount they would be applying for, please note when a grant is awarded, the entity which is City of Socorro is responsible for the reporting and spending. If not administered correctly, City of Socorro would have to pay that money back to the federal government. I have learned today that there is another company that will be hired to apply in behalf of the City of Socorro for the grant and administer it, which is not TNG, also not in the agreement. And let me tell you a little bit about the grant. The first round of the Boot Program makes a hundred and twenty million dollars in funding available for infrastructure projects that bring broadband access to end users in ineligible, I'm sorry, ineligible areas of the state. This is ARPA funding that is being passed through the Texas Broadband Development Office. The funding allocated to the state by the U.S. Treasury for broadband is three, three hundred and sixty-three point eight million dollars. Eligible cost, broadband infrastructure projects that are designed to deliver upon completion service that reliably meets or exceeds symmetrical speeds. Eligible project areas are determined by the State Broadband Development Map. Funding range ranges from two hundred thousand to five million. TNG shall have complete and unlimited rights to all data and information produced in the performance of this agreement and may use such data without authorization from the city. The city may not share any data received through the performance of this agreement with any person other than those employed by the city without express written authorization from TNG. The proposal presented under this agreement will be performed by TNG at no cost to the city. However, TNG will be applying for a grant in our behalf. Staff at this time is asking for the agreement to state all details and have clear language on the responsibilities of each entity as federal funding is vital to our community and would not, we would not want to jeopardize any potential funding in the future. Do you all have any questions?
No questions. Mr. Reyes?
Um, not a question, but more of a concern about them applying on our behalf, that we don't know exactly what they're applying, the amount. And also, one of my concerns is that the attorney is still reviewing the agreement. So we don't, we're not a hundred percent sure.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, if we could, if we'd be happy to answer any questions, we're here for, for the item. There's, if you, if you don't mind, uh, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'd love to address the question that was just, the concern that was just raised by, uh.
One, one moment, please. Mr. Reyes, did you finish your statement?
Just it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Parent, thank, thank you, thank you very much. This is Ruben Cortez and Mr. Manriquez, who presented before you all, is also on with us. Uh, I guess initially, we weren't sure how to proceed when we were there before you last time, and Mr. Manriquez presented. Uh, it, it appeared as if though the council, I guess unanimously approved to allow us to submit a proposal. What we did is we put language in some type of an agreement that we gave to the City, uh, City Secretary Rodarte, that kind of, uh, we believe outlined, uh, what would, what would be occurring. Uh, and, and maybe there was so- some miscommunication. Our firm does not act as a grant writer. We work very closely with several grant writers in this space, uh, and as these grants are filled out, we help those grant writers through all of the grant narratives. There's a lot of technical aspects that go through that. Uh, but if, if, if I can just, I guess, move out of the conversation of, of the grant portion of this, the, the bigger, the bigger, the bigger portion of what we're trying to talk about, and, and your, your City Secretary talked about it when she read some of the funding in the, in the Boot, uh, grant, which is part of the bead money from the infrastructure fund that's out there. Uh, this is only round one of a grant that's in excess of three hundred million dollars. Uh, the unfortunate reality is that it's very likely that even if you all were to say yes this evening, that we may not even have time to apply for that first round of grants that the City Secretary, uh.
Oh, that would be our City Manager.
Right, I'm sorry, that your City Manager alluded to just a moment ago, my apologies. Uh, that grant, uh, it opened unfortunately a little earlier than we anticipated. It opened on April the fifth, and it closes on May the fifth. But, uh, so that, that already poses a, a very unique set of, of circumstances. So I, if you all could just bear with me for a second, and then I'll let Mr. Manriquez speak, uh, and, and he probably had a couple other things to add. If we can just take that portion out for a second. What the initial request was, uh, from you, Madam Mayor, and Members of the City Council, was to allow us to explore whether or not the City of Socorro could benefit from becoming its own internet service provider. Cities all over the state of Texas, all over the United States, are developing what is now known as the fourth utility. This is something, uh, when you look at that grant that your City Manager just, just talked about, attached on that grant, there is an FCC map that shows communities, and there's, it, it's a blue-lit map that shows communities, and if they're served or underserved. When you go into that map, it shows the City of Socorro is a completely served community. In the research that Luis Manrique has done through some experts that work completely in this field, it, it has come out that about slightly above fifty-six percent, fifty-seven or something like that percent of your city is considered served. The remaining portion of the city is considered unserved or underserved. And because of that, we believe that there's a tremendous opportunity. So at the point that you all wanted to pursue these federal grants, like the one that was just mentioned, the likelihood of you qualifying for them highly increases, right? And so what we had originally come in asking to do is let us explore for you whether this is something even worth doing. At the end of this journey, that we don't plan on charging the city one nickel for, you all are gonna make an official decision and say, oh my God, this is fantastic, let's own our own internet service provider company, or let's not, or we like the idea and let's create a public-private partnership. All of the, the options would be laid out, and in the end, it would be you guys, Madam Mayor and the City Council, along with your, uh, City Manager and any other a- a- administration in the city who would make the final decision on whether or not to move forward. And so when you all approved it last time to allow us to give a proposal, we thought, okay, well, before we do, let's send them something in writing so that there can be, you know, some, some type of a proposal agreement between the parties so that they know we're gonna be in the city, we're gonna be talking.
No charge. You can call 1-800-669-977 or visit hot.gov. That information is also available on the City of Socorro's website. And we'll be spreading the information via our social media platforms as well for the rest of the month of April.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Hi.
Rudy Cruz?
Hi.
And Ivan Colovilla Lobos is absent.
City Manager, item number 16. Discussion and Action to Approve Proposal for Professional Engineering Services by Trilogy 5G Inc. Doing DBA Trilogy Next Gen for the City of Socorro Smart City Initiative.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in our last meeting, we were asked to go back and receive a proposal. We did receive an agreement. Then they sent the agreement, naming it the proposal. The attorney is still reviewing the agreement and staff continues to have multiple questions regarding TNG. This agency will be applying for a grant on behalf of the City of Socorro. This agreement does not stipulate the administration of the grant. The amount they would be applying for, please note when a grant is awarded, the entity which is City of Socorro is responsible for the reporting and spending. If not administered correctly, City of Socorro would have to pay that money back to the federal government. I have learned today that there is another company that will be hired to apply in behalf of the City of Socorro for the grant and administer it, which is not TNG, also not in the agreement. And let me tell you a little bit about the grant. The first round of the boot program makes $120 million in funding available for infrastructure projects that bring broadband access to end users in eligible, I'm sorry, ineligible areas of the state. This is ARPA funding that is being passed through the Texas Broadband Development Office. The funding allocated to the state by the U.S. Treasury for broadband is $363.8 million. Eligible cost, broadband infrastructure projects that are designed to deliver upon completion service that reliably meets or exceeds symmetrical speeds. Eligible project areas are determined by the state broadband development map. Funding range ranges from $200,000 to $5 million. TNG shall have complete and unlimited rights to all data and information produced in the performance of this agreement and may use such data without authorization from the city. The city may not share any data received through the performance of this agreement with any person other than those employed by the city without express written authorization from TNG. The proposal presented under this agreement will be performed by TNG at no cost to the city. However, TNG will be applying for a grant in our behalf. Staff at this time is asking for the agreement to state all details and have clear language on the responsibilities of each entity as federal funding is vital to our community and would not, we would not want to jeopardize any potential funding in the future. Do you all have any questions?
No questions. Mr. Reyes?
Not a question, but more of a concern about them applying on our behalf. That we don't know exactly what they're applying, the amount. And also, one of my concerns is that the attorney is still reviewing the agreement. So we don't, we're not 100% sure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if we could, if we'd be happy to answer any questions, we're here for the item. There's, if you, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd love to address the question that was just, the concern that was just raised by...
One moment, please. Mr. Reyes, did you finish your statement?
Just it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam President, thank you, thank you very much. This is Ruben Cortez and Mr. Manriquez, who presented before you all is also on with us. I guess initially, we weren't sure how to proceed when we were there before you last time and Mr. Manriquez presented. It appeared as if though the council, I guess unanimously approved to allow us to submit a proposal. What we did is we put language in some type of an agreement that we gave to the City Secretary Rodarte that kind of, we believe outlined what would, what would be occurring. And maybe there was some miscommunication. Our firm does not act as a grant writer. We work very closely with several grant writers in this space. And as these grants are filled out, we help those grant writers through all of the grant narratives. There's a lot of technical aspects that go through that. But if, if, if I can just, I guess, move out of the conversation of, of the grant portion of this, the bigger, the bigger, the bigger portion of what we're trying to talk about, and your, your City Secretary talked about it when she read some of the funding in the, in the boot grant, which is part of the BID money from the infrastructure fund that's out there. This is only round one of a grant that's in excess of $300 million. The unfortunate reality is that it's very likely that even if you all were to say yes this evening, that we may not even have time to apply for that first round of grants that the City Secretary...
Oh, that would be our city manager.
Right, I'm sorry, that your city manager alluded to just a moment ago, my apologies. That grant, it opened unfortunately a little earlier than we anticipated. It opened on April the 5th and it closes on May the 5th. But, so that, that already poses a very unique set of circumstances. So if you all could just bear with me for a second and then I'll let Mr. Manriquez speak. And he probably had a couple of other things to add. If we can just take that portion out for a second. What the initial request was from you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council was to allow us to explore whether or not the City of Socorro could benefit from becoming its own internet service provider. Cities all over the state of Texas, all over the United States are developing what is now known as the Fourth Utility. This is something, when you look at that grant that your city manager just, just talked about, attached on that grant, there is an FCC map that shows communities. And there's, it's a blue lit map that shows communities and if they're served or underserved. When you go into that map, it shows the City of Socorro is a completely served community. In the research that Luis Manrique has done through some experts that work completely in this field, it, it has come out that about slightly above 56%, 57% or something like that percent of your city is considered served. The remaining portion of the city is considered unserved or underserved. And because of that, we believe that there's a tremendous opportunity. So at the point that you all wanted to pursue these federal grants, like the one that was just mentioned, the likelihood of you qualifying for them highly increases, right? And so what we had originally come in asking to do is let us explore for you whether this is something even worth doing. At the end of this journey, that we don't plan on charging the city one nickel for, you all are going to make an official decision and say, oh my God, this is fantastic. Let's own our own internet service provider company. Or let's not. Or we like the idea and let's create a public-private partnership. All of the, the options would be laid out. And in the end, it would be you guys, Madam Mayor and the City Council, along with your city manager and any other administration in the city who would make the final decision on whether or not to move forward. And so when you all approved it last time to allow us to give a proposal, we thought, okay, well, before we do, let's send them something in writing so that there can be, you know, some, some type of a proposal agreement between the parties so that they know we're going to be in the city, we're going to be talking to city staff, we're going to be, we're going to be in your neighborhoods. Our engineers will be down there identifying as they build out a model that we would come in later, sit with you at some kind of a city commission workshop and, and go through some of the facets of this as that builds out and, and develops. And so all of that work, we are proposing still with your consent to do that at no cost. If, if there is a concern on the, on anything related to the grant, it's not likely that we're going to qualify to participate, to help you all participate for the grant that closes on May 5th anyways. So at this point, unfortunately, even if we wanted to, it's very unlikely that we would make that deadline or help you make that deadline. But with your permission, we would still like to move forward with final, or beginning the next steps of creating a feasibility study that would help you further understand if this is something that would benefit the city or not. This is not something that you're going to be locked into. It's just allowing us to explore if what other cities across the country are taking advantage of would work for you or not. Mr. Manriquez, do you want to add anything?
Yes, thank you, Ruben. Thank you, City Council. First of all, I sincerely apologize for Ruben and I, Mr. Cortez and I not being in person. But it, it's exactly where our intentions. I'd like to also say that we don't want to, we don't want to make the City of Socorro feel rushed in any way getting into something that they feel comfortable. We're here to hear you, hear your concerns, hear what makes you comfortable at the end of the day and also make sure that, well, make you feel that we're not going in there just rushing to something. We want to make sure everything is, is done correctly to your liking and to your comfort level. And, and we, we understand, we understand like Ruben said, the apparent need that is needed in the City of Socorro. And we'd love to take the, the small steps to get there. And this is the very first step, a big step, but it's small. We're not going to go rush through anything. We just want to make sure you guys feel comfortable, the City Council, the mayor, city manager, everybody involved. And, and we can take a step back and go slowly and, and look at all the document, look at the, the proposal, the, the agreement that we sent over and make sure everybody's aligned and feels comfortable to move forward slowly and as comfortable as you want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, Jim, on this item right here for discussion and action, would tabling this item also be considered a form of action?
Postponing it is an action you can take.
Right, but it would be something that, that we could revisit or introduce at a later meeting is my question ultimately. So for, for Trilogy Next Gen, I don't, I don't foresee the argument being that, that we don't think this is a great opportunity for the City of Socorro. We, we don't disagree with you on statements being made as far as the services that, that we potentially lack and the, the community that we want to serve is something that we, we are looking to do here in the near future. But I, I feel that in order for our staff to conduct and execute a, an agreement that it's, it's not really something that they, they, they need to feel comfortable with. It's something that needs to have everything outlined, it needs to be correct and concise. And on time, I feel that we're, we're rushing into things, we're, we're about, you know, we're, we're going to get married here and we've only gone on one date. And I think that if, if we were to postpone this item a day, that would allow our staff to provide you guys with questions and things that, that may be needed outlined in that agreement there. But I don't like the fact that we're kicking around a, a document here and, and kind of tailoring it to what we think it should be. I think it should come from, from you all, the, the, the entity that's proposing to provide the service. And then I have one, one last question before, before I get off the mic here. The, the proposal and the study that's going to be conducted, I, I, I know that it's at no charge to the city, but how, how will it be funded? Is that through, through next Trilogy funding, third party?
It's our, but, yes, sir, it's through our, it's an investment on our behalf.
Understood, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion on the table right now to postpone the item for Professional Engineering Services by Trilogy.
For the next...
Just have one, one question before you all take the vote. So in the interim, would you like us to continue to working with City Manager Rodarte until we outline the specificity that she discussed in the proposal? Finalize the agreement, maybe try to hammer out some time with your general counsel to make sure that the language is articulated to the satisfaction of, of city staff?
So I would, I would forward that question on over to, to our city manager and, and what she's seen and...
Yes, sir. I, I ask specific questions and then I know I understand you telling us, well, let's forget about the grant. And let's not, and, and we had this conversation earlier today. We can't forget about something that is super important that you're going to go after funding for and we need to make sure that what are we on the hook for? So yes, I would be the person that you would be in contact with.
Okay, thank, thank you, City Sec, City Manager Rodarte. What we'll, what we'll likely do, if, if you don't mind, is Mr. Manriquez and I will probably, we're probably going to be coming back into the El Paso area and we'd love to come and sit with you in person and, and kind of work through some of this.
Mr. Martinez?
Mr. Cruz, I would suggest identifying the meeting to which you are postponing it. Or, or the length of the postponement.
Mr. Rodarte, what, what timeframe do you feel comfortable with? Would it, would it be a...
I, I don't know. My experience though is that if we ask them to change something, they modify the agreement. And that's normally not the way we do, you know, if we go through negotiations, not just change it to what we want it to say. Right? So I think that if, if they're just going to change whatever it is that we want, so then maybe we should drop the contract and they send it to them for their review.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand right now is postponing this item here to allow staff adequate time?
Yes. And also, on another note before we make that decision is that we have a grant writer. So why would we be hiring someone else to do our grant writing? And the only reason I say is you're, you're handing it over to someone that we really don't have control over on how they'll be spending funds that we, well, that the city, they're being asked in, in behalf of the City of Socorro. Is my question. Because it wouldn't even be TNG, they would be hiring someone outside. My fear is what if they walk away and we're stuck with the, whatever amount of money is requested?
Well, we can include that in...
Madam, Mr. Rodarte, thank you for, for raising that point. Again, as I had mentioned before, nothing in the agreement is, is anything that we're not willing to work with. The only reason that we suggest specific people is because of the technical background that they have. If your comfort level is that you use your in-house grant writer, we would gladly work with whoever you have to bring that comfort level back in. Our, our team would just have to work rather closely with them because of some of the more technical aspects of the grant. And since we don't write it, we would only help them with the grant narratives. And some of these are pretty technical in nature. We would just have to work very, very closely with, with your grant writer to ensure that those, those aspects, at whatever point, this actually moves into a grant phase. If it moves into that grant phase, then, then yes, if your preference is your in-house, for us, that is not an issue. We would gladly do that. We just would have to work very, very closely with them to make sure that, that Mr. Manriquez and his technical team provide the narratives that are required to, to properly submit that grant, to properly apply for a challenge to the FCC maps, which we believe are incorrectly classifying the City of Socorro as a completely served community. When the data that Mr. Manrique and his technical team have already done investigatively just on, up to where we're at today, leads them to believe that you have about, I don't know, 40, 48, 46% of the city is roughly considered unserved or underserved. And so again, those things are all things that we're, like I said, very amenable to. We, we, as long as they're willing to work closely with Mr. Manriquez's team, for us, it's, if it's your person or someone that we're familiar with, it really makes no difference.
Yes, and then my second question, Mr. Cortez, is if the city's not paying anything to this feasibility study, why wouldn't you be able to do the study, come back, and then at that point pitch or sell what you're trying to sell once you've determined the information?
You know, and that is an excellent question.
That is, yes.
I, I, I thought that, I thought that that's what we were going to do, but I thought we were outlining that in some kind of agreement and giving it to you to say, this is what we're going to do. But there, I guess, maybe the agreement is, maybe we approached it wrong?
No, I think, my, my question, no. Mr. Cortez, my question is, is that why would you need an agreement with the city to go out and do your study to sell us your product?
Well...
Why would, why would the city have to go into an agreement with you all in order for you to sell us a product?
There, there's, and, and this is probably more of a Luis question, but there's a lot of technical aspects where we kind of have to hold hands with the city to understand the infrastructure that you have in place. Where, you know, city lights, city poles, all these different things. And there requires the level of partnership and communication. And so when we submitted a one and a half page proposal, it was kind of outlining the work, the technical work that probably Luis can speak to more fluently than I so that you know that there's, it's a permissible communication and there's, I guess, dedicated folks that can help Trilogy walk through some of the more, I guess, complicated tasks that require work when we have people in, on the ground. Luis, you want to add anything to that?
It, it does, City Manager Rodarte, it does make the process a lot quicker and easier whenever you connect the technical people with technical people. On not being one of those technical people, I'm, I'm, I'm technical, but not to that level. It, it's, it's, it does make the process quicker and easier to do. Whenever you, you have something in, in writing, you're like, okay, we can work with this, this entity, us with this entity to make things quicker and faster. Instead of, there is available information that is public around any city, but there's certain aspects of city infrastructure, like fiber backbone, where the head ends, right? All those technical terms and infrastructure that is critical to a city. And only city folks or city staff know where that, or how it works and what they use and, and essentially where, where it is as well too.
Yes, I, I mean, I think that staff would continue. And, and the only reason I ask that is that that's how we typically do business here. Is that normally we work with vendors, they go out before we enter into an agreement and that was the only reason I was asking.
Okay, that, that makes perfect sense, yes.
Right, we have another question. Mr. Garcia?
I got two questions. One, the first one's for Jim. Jim, for us not going to an RFQ, are we in some kind of legal predicament?
No, what, what I finally, what I finally figured out is that they're a member of a buy board.
Okay.
And so that, that's a mechanism expressly designed to circumvent the need for an RFQ or an RFP.
Okay. Second question is, what happens if we don't get the grant? What happens then?
If we don't get the grant, go ahead, Ruben. That question for us?
Yes, what happens if we don't get the grant?
Well, nothing. I mean, there's going to be a lot more funding as, as your city manager talked about. Only 120 million of the 300-plus million of this specific one that she talked about is been released. So if we don't make the May, the May 5th deadline, which is unfortunately unlikely at this point, then we have to wait for the second round of that $380 million grant to come out, right? In, in the meantime, the work of the feasibility study, Commissioner, has zero to do with the grant. It's, it's us outlining a path for you to consider whether or not you even want to own your own ISP. Is this something that can bring positive cash flow to the city? Or is it going to be a cash drain on the city? If it's a cash drain, I, I can tell you right now, none of you on that dais are going to want to vote for it. I wouldn't vote for it. I, I've been in public office and I wouldn't want to support something that's a cash drain, right? And that's a risk that we take when we go out and do this work. If the data suggests that this isn't worth doing, we're going to come back and tell you that. If the data suggests that it does, we're going to give you all the tools that you need to make a decision on whether you want to own the system, whether you want to just build out the middle mile through grant funding and do a public-private partnership. You know, who are all the other stakeholders that you want to bring into this conversation? Like the, like the reservation, like the Socorro Independent School District, El Paso County. You know, we, we will lay everything out for you so that you can make the most informed decisions. I hope that answers your question, Commissioner.
Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, just one last thing. I think we keep talking about grant funding, but I, I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading the, the agenda item and it's, and it's just a proposal for Professional Engineering Services. I don't know if that's part of the original agreement or, or proposal. I don't, I don't understand. The grant funding should come at a later date. I think the, the study conducted at no cost to the City of Socorro should happen. And then you come back and then say, okay, City of Socorro, we found it that your city does work or it does not work. It's not a good fit. I, I feel that if we, if we go after the grant funding right now before the study's conducted, I'm trying to find out where the study fits into the grant.
Well, when, when they identify that the City of Socorro qualifies, then that's when they're going to tap into the grant. So it's important to identify right now what type of source they're going to use and why are we needing to be in an agreement if they're doing their feasibility study?
Yeah, it's just a study right now, so...
And, and right now, if we do sign in, they're telling you that the feasibility study they own.
Ah, okay, okay, that's where the, okay. Gotcha.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
So you're, you're 100% correct. We do not, if it makes the conversation easier with you, Madam Mayor and Councilman, the, when we, if, if the desire of the Board of the Council today is to move forward with the feasibility study, then within that feasibility study, we will outline the mechanics for funding mechanisms that you all can look towards if you decide to move forward. They don't need to be applied for until that time if that is the, the will of, of, of the commission. We could move forward with just the, the study to identify whether or not this is even a viable plan. And with respect to, to the notion that we own the, the, the information, you know, feasibility of, of this sort would range our firm anywhere between, depending on, on, on how many people we have on, on the ground, we're going to spend anywhere between $60,000 and $100,000 to conduct this study. And again, this is a no-cost study because at the end of this, as your general counsel talked about, because we're part of the co-op, should the city decide to move forward, our hope, and which is what a portion of this agreement also outlines, is that if you decide that you wanted to do this, you do it with Trilogy Next Gen as your partner in this. If you decide you don't want to do it, then you don't do it. And, and that was really, that was really what that, the focus of that was.
Mr. Garcia?
What happens if we decide not to go with you guys after the feasibility study?
Then we shake hands and we part ways. And if you all don't think it's a good idea, you, you don't move, you don't move forward. And us and our engineers and our technical team, we, we, we leave.
Mayor, ma'am?
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to interject and I'm not trying to influence the, the policy decisions that the council makes. But I'm just saying, I understand what Mr. Cortez described and part of the difficulty I think that I've had. part of the difficulty, I think, that I've had, just from the legal aspect, is, okay, well, that's not what the contract says, that's not the proposed agreement you sent to me, it doesn't say what you're describing. And it just occurs to me as one example, what Mr. Garcia asked about, well, what happens if we don't wanna go with it? Well, that's the kind of thing that needs to be memorialized in a contract, so we don't have to guess about what the obligations are at what stage, we know exactly what they are. And I don't wanna get in a fight between Mr. Cruz and the city manager, but I will tell you, Mr. Cruz, one of my, the contract is not very specific, and we can always, we could write the contract ourselves, that's not my preference, I will do it if the city manager tells me to. Typically, with a vendor of this nature, we get a thorough, specific, proposed contract from the vendor, and then, you know, we've done this hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of times, and we go through, and we know where the soft spots are legally, and we, you know, edit and propose, and we redline, and we send it back and forth six times, and then we have an agreement to present to city council. We don't have that yet here, and so, that's part of the reason, I think, I've asked, I've told the city manager, what my view was, was like, this isn't, we need more time, and I gotta get my hands around this, they need to send us a thorough, complete, proposed contract, or she needs to tell me, look, just, I know it's gonna take six hours, Jim, but you go write the contract.
I agree with Mr. Martinez, I would have them draft up a complete contract and negotiate the points. I don't know what you all think. Mr. Reyes?
Got a question. Let's say everything goes as planned, funding, everything, everybody likes the numbers, let's say, is the City of Socorro ready to take over a utility? I know that you had looked into getting the, what's it, the solid waste, and everybody was excited, and when we saw the numbers, it was like, okay, stay away from it. I'm thinking customer service, installers, salespeople, that the city's gonna have to overlook, or HR.
Yes, so, those are part of the questions that we have, and conversations that have occurred.
This would be part of the contract as well, would it?
Yeah, those would all be, those would all be questions that would also be answered in your feasibility study. Because, as I talked about, the different varieties of programs that exist, the city could own the middle mile and lease the rest of it out in a public-private partnership, and if you all, if, again, this is assuming you all move forward at the very end of this process, you all could own what's like the heart of the network, which is called the middle mile, and lease out the outer bands to a private company, and that private company manages everything, and you all get an annual check if you move forward, or you can do it where you own the entire thing and you sub out certain things, you know, and even in those things that you sub out, if you were to move forward, and again, I'm just fast-forwarding all the way to the very end to address the concern of the Councilman, fast-forward to the very end of this, let's say you all went through this exercise and said, yes, the system is all built out, and you're ready to start selling to customers, again, those are also areas at that point, not part of this feasibility agreement, that you all could contract a company like ours to assist you with, if you wanted, right? Ideally, you, we don't jump into those areas, but we can, we have, and we would at the request of the city, but again, that's, you're talking about fast-forwarding eighteen, twenty-four months from now, that's, but I understand, you wanna make sure that whatever you do, that the City of Socorro is ready to receive it, and that's all the information that would be delineated for you all through a very thorough feasibility study. So that when, Commissioner, when you make the decision, and if that's a concern that you have, is the city prepared, you'll have that information, you'll be armed with that knowledge, and you, and Madam Mayor, you as well, and all of you on the council will be able to make the most informed decision about potential next steps, if you decide to enter into next steps. And if you don't, then you don't, you'll know, when you see it, you all will have time to digest it and know.
Yes, and then just one last comment, is that the reason that this agreement came in so rushed is because you needed to apply for that funding on May fifth, but now we're saying that that funding's not gonna come till later?
Unfortunately, Madam Secretary, as I'm looking at the calendar, we sit here, May twentieth, the deadline for the grant is, I'm sorry, today's April twentieth, I apologize, and the deadline for the grant is May fifth.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that you didn't say, you, I guess, right now, my understanding is that the grant, we weren't gonna apply until the feasibility is completed, so it wouldn't be under this round, right?
It wouldn't be under this round anymore. Initially, when we were there, when we were there, when we were there in the very beginning, at the beginning of the month, we believed that if this conversation had sped up, that we might have had an opportunity to assist the city with that step. Today, on April twentieth, Luis and I can safely tell you that it is gonna be a mere impossibility to get that done, which all that does is buy us, if you decide to move forward with just the feasibility study, to work with you and your staff and your attorney to outline any issues or concerns in an agreement that is more fitting to the request that we've heard from council and from the commission, and go into a next steps and maybe come in and do a workshop with you and your team, once we've outlined all of the target points in the necessary agreement, and then we can come in after the fact and sit with you guys, and then we can pick a launch date for the beginning of the feasibility study, if that's acceptable to you, ma'am.
So, Mr. Martinez, our...
Manriquez?
No, Martinez, our legal counsel.
All right.
Is it safe to say that the integrity or accountability of what's been provided to us, because it was kind of rushed, is that question here? It's not so much the fact that there's an organization or entity that wants to provide the City of Socorro at no charge, a proposal for a study to be conducted, but the way it was poorly written and submitted to the city, it's, it doesn't sit well with us right now, but is, what is it that's questionable then right now? If we were to postpone this item, have them come back and say, okay, our attorney figured out something, and here's all the stuff that we feel you guys are needing or looking at, does that make the staff feel more comfortable with, not necessarily going after grant funding, but allowing them to provide the study?
I think your last, the last phrase in your question triggers what my answer's gonna be, yeah, I think that's a question for the staff, not really the lawyer, I mean, I can do the legal work fairly straightforward, it's easy, but the question, I think, I defer to the city manager.
So, I think for me, it's just, there's a lot of what ifs, and then the answering changes. No, we're not gonna go after the grant first, but then we were rushed to do the grant, we were only given two weeks. It's, how long is a feasibility study? Would it have been done in two weeks before the May fifth? I mean, there's just a lot of questions that I just don't, honestly, it just makes me feel uneasy.
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
We have a motion made by Mr. Cruz.
Okay, but, but didn't give a date.
Yeah, I didn't give a date, I was thinking about the dates here. The next council meeting is...
So, the next meeting is the fourth, I believe? The fourth of May?
The fourth, and then the eighteenth.
Do I need to state that item, or that motion again there, Jim?
You just have to specify the length of the meeting, you can just say the second meeting in May.
Second meeting in May of 2023, yeah.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
No.
Cesar Nevaris?
No.
Alejandro Garcia?
No.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría Lobo's absent.
Mayor and council, item number seventeen, discussion and action.
Mayor, may I?
I'm sorry.
We haven't disposed of the item yet, it was a motion to postpone.
It was, oh...
And the motion failed, I would suggest entertaining a separate motion.
A second motion.
I would like to make a motion to deny item sixteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría Lobo's absent.
Mayor and council, item number seventeen, discussion and action to approve proclamation whereas the City of Socorro, Texas proclaims Sunday, April thirtieth through May sixth, 2023, a small business week.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This would be my item, the City of Socorro, Texas proclaims the week of April thirtieth through May sixth, 2023, a small business week. We know that there are currently over thirty-three million small businesses in the United States. They create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. We urge the residents of our community, as well as the communities across the country, to support Small Business Week and throughout the year.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría Lobo's absent.
If there's not any more, second.
Do we have a motion to delete items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one?
Motion to delete items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría Lobo's absent.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombría Lobo's absent.
Meeting adjourns at seven twenty-two PM. Good night.
Goodbye.